Good evening. Welcome to our Monday, June 28th Board of Selectmen meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands for one nation, on the God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with open forum. Anyone here for open forum? Seeing none, I will close open forum. And we'll go right into our appointments. Paula Wolf, Director of Assessing. Consent, please.
Hi.
Aye.
So it's the end of June. New growth closes out as of June 30th. And I've been kind of working on this stuff. So I thought, I very seldom come up and kind of give a low down on what's happening. So I thought, why not? And the other thing is the sales in the town and just everything that's been going on. So new growth, I don't know if everybody like in the town understands like what. So we hunt down new growth and follow all the permitting for the new growth. And new growth every year goes, whatever we can find that wasn't on the tax roll last year gets added to it. And then the values of those items that we add, whether it be additions, new construction, commercial, industrial, land that wasn't useful that turns into useful land, which we have, you know, some of that going on too. All of that gets added. The new values from the old values, that difference is what we call new growth. And when we get that total all together, it's usually, it can be like, on average, 12 million. It can be on crazy boomtown years, it's gone to 850, that new growth, 850 in the dollars. But that would be like $32 million worth of difference in property values. So this year, there's been a lot of activity on permitting. And what we found was not only are people not able to buy, and when they do buy, you know, the market's crazy, but they're doing a lot of stuff to their homes. And that difference from say the house was worth 400 to now it's worth 450 because they put an addition on or whatever. Now we're taxing the 50. So we have some good potential of growth coming at us. And it looks like it's going to be a long term, kind of a steady, maybe over the next five years, from the what we've heard that's coming into the town. Like we already know there's 14 houses that went on Central Street because of that land that we sold. Well, not only did we get those lots in that land, but the other land behind it is becoming something. And all those lots were small exempt landlocked properties. And now they're all valued at land, land, useful land. So that, all that value, so that, that Hanson Land kind of getting that on the tax roll, we're starting to see it a year or two years later, the value coming in on that. So we have a lot of new construction coming in, in subdivisions. We don't really have, you know, there's a few that are approved, but those are coming in. And then the real estate, just, just an update. I ran three sales from 2019 to the 2020 to 2021. And our average for the sales each year has gone up 10%. And that's, that's just, 383, the next year, the average was, so say 383,000 was our average of sales. And that's taken it from the bottom to the top. Then next year it went up to 424. And then this half, half of 2020, we're at 464.
Wow.
So we had a colonial that was, you know, 540 and sold for 690, you know, in like a three, two year span. That was just kind of a crazy, it had an addition and stuff. But this is the stuff that we're tracking just, and the values keep going up and up and up in the town. So the other thing that was kind of a challenge when we were, we have to follow this. We have to follow permitting and then maybe some people don't pull permits. So we want to make sure we are getting our data straight. So last year with the help of, because we couldn't go out and do inspections, we got this technology called NearMap. And we had a flyover done maybe four years ago, five years ago. We got some funding, the town approved it, and we had a flyover. A bunch of towns chipped in and they flew over and then they send you the, the mapping of it. So you can actually see the house, the footprint. And then we look at what our sketch is and our footprint. And we would track it down a little bit with that data that we got from the last time. And then during COVID last year, we were able to purchase this technology called NearMap. And a lot of other towns did it through the, the ability to purchase this because of the COVID, because we couldn't go out. And it was actually an important part of being able to get some funding to do that through the government or however, what that was. And this technology is amazing. They do three to five flyovers in this whole, like say Massachusetts. And they go over our town, that's included. And then we get the updates. And you can go online and you can see two months later that this house now is bigger, that there are pools in and that, and they have, the technology behind it is crazy. I hit a button for new construction and all of a sudden, orange dots light up the screen. And they track what wasn't there to what is there now. They also track if land has become like gravel from grass. So it's pretty, I was in a conference hall last week with the assessors. And a lot of towns are saying that is going to be what we're going to do, rather than this trudging on your feet, knocking on doors, trying to get in backyards. We really can track everything. So I'm going to sit down over the next three or four months with the other departments and see if, you know, if there's any interest because I want to show them what, what we have. And we have it until that, that runs out in September, late September. But they do have some mapping funding that was left over from a fly, the flyover that I believe we could, you know, associate with this because it is similar to that. And, and then talk to some of the other departments. But that was kind of a cool thing. And we, we did find a lot of things just sitting on the desk during COVID where we couldn't get out, but we were still able to and track things. And then, yeah, that was basically it. We have the future following the corridor, Route 18 corridor. That's going to be more of an industrial, commercial kind of, you know, new construction or whatever happens there. But we have some, you know, some great potential for new growth there too. And lastly, we have the other half of the Hanson Land auction that we're, we're going to start working on. And what happened with this last one is kind of a, you know, a starter, what will give you an idea of where we'll go for the next one. We're trying to plan it. We have to meet with the planning and get everyone on board as far as if we need to make any kind of zoning changes. And what the town might need with that land, it's quite a bit of land. So maybe there's some, you know, keep auctioning off. Obviously, we want to get it back on the tax roll. But maybe there's a, a reason to keep a little bit of it for a need for the town, you know. And those are the things that we want to try to look at. We're, you know, kind of hope with that town planner that that would be something. But we're, we've been on this for a long time. We have a good crew together. And I think that we will keep looking at that and exploring it. And we're working with the engineering company and a couple of other people through the Plymouth Colony. What are they, OC?
OCPC.
Yeah, and they have some really great people working for them that will, will help also. So, yeah, that's just the update. But there's, there is a lot going on coming off of a crazy year. You know, I sat down today and the new growth in the past six months, I give you an, I, I give you an estimate. There's no way you can figure it out because it occurs right up till now. And I'm asked for an estimate in January, sometimes December. So it's, it's a little bit, and I'm cautious. I would never want to go, you know, save more than, you know, so we kind of look at it. But the amount of permits from the past six months has been crazy. The people, people are doing things to their houses. They're not going away. They're not spending a lot of money like we used to. And maybe that'll change next year. But right now, people invested in their homes. And our, our new growth was up quite a, quite a bit just by the permitting in the past three or four months. And we're, we're done with it. And we've, we've captured it between being able to go out a little bit and then that near map. So that looks pretty good for this year. And, and it will look really good for next year because we have some big, big, big projects coming on board. So, so just to give you an update. Thank you. Any questions?
How much are you bringing taxes down?
Huh?
How much?
Taxes will be, the tax rate will be going down, but your taxes will not be going down.
Rate goes down.
Rate goes down, value goes up, you know.
Age old story.
That's the first question we're going to get.
Yeah.
When's the bubble going to burst?
The magic number. I've talked to a lot of different people in two, in the assessing world, in the appraising world, the real estate world. There is a consensus that it will end and that this isn't an infinitive, infinite climb to, you know. Hopefully not a, a crash or a, a major, major bubble burst. Because we're a little, we're a little bit in a better, 20% down is, is a pretty strong thing that people are putting down now. You might not be able to go anywhere for a little while as like 2005. It wasn't a disaster. You just found out your house wasn't worth as much as, so. But right now, until we get more houses on the market, people are still going to outbid.
It's crazy.
As an appraiser, I see it constantly. What was it listed at? Okay, now what is the contract price? And it's, it's nine times out of 10, it is above the contract price and by quite a bit. And it's just like.
How do people get a mortgage if the value is still, you know, are banks lending enough?
Well, that's a hard, that's a really hard job for appraisers right now. Because you have to use the, the values that you're seeing coming in. And you can't go back six months or eight months, no way. The market's like current. But people are buying, there's a lot of cash buyers.
No.
There's a lot of people putting a lot of money down. So you, you could be putting down 20% and you only need an appraised value of this. Because, not only need an appraised value, but if you're willing to put more money down to get the house, you, you will. And then as these houses, I, you can't turn a blind eye to a cash sale. You, you go, oh, it was a cash sale. However, there's a lot out there. So it is the market. And if the market's saying that, then you have to follow the market. So if you have comps that are, that are over the asking price, you have to say, okay, I guess it's worth this then. And so edge, 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 edge up. And that's exactly what happened in 2005. We were all, we all probably owned houses and watched that happen. So anyway, we were doing a lot of like, no, non, no, what was it? You didn't even have to have a job to get a loan back in 2004 and '05. So now they're pretty strict about stuff like that. So that's why we're hoping that, that, you know, that kind of a crash won't happen. But, you know, anyway. So that's it.
Mr. John, just, Paula, can we go back over the, the timing of your new growth estimate for budgeting purposes? Let's finish off the, let's finish the thought. You're asked for them, you know, very early in the, in the budget cycle.
Yep.
Your free cash actually gets certified in what month of the year?
Oh, July, when does?
August or September.
Yeah, August, September.
Okay. So, so the challenge there is you, you, you estimate conservatively for the spring town meeting. And if there's a fall town meeting, if the variances are very significant, you're going to adjust your new growth.
Right.
I estimate with, with some town meeting actions. But conservatism on new growth in the spring is, is the word, notwithstanding current market conditions. But never go into your spring meeting, you know.
Thinking you're going to get.
Rose colored glasses are, well, wishful thinking, okay?
I usually, I usually run a report and find out where I'm at right then. And then look at maybe things that are already in the, in rolling that I know might be finished by June 30th. But never, you know, that's a dangerous, that's a dangerous thing. All of a sudden, you know, you have a shortfall in your budget. That's not okay. Like you said, it, there's a, a fall could be corrective. But you'd rather have them say, guess what? When we figured it out, it was more than we thought.
But your ongoing tracking of that is a result of the building department turning over all their permits to you. So you track that stuff as it goes along on a.
Right.
Week to week and month to month basis.
Since Patrick, since Patrick started using the.
Online.
People, the GIS system that we have, the People GIS, and putting that in the computer daily. And then it, we have access to it. So we, I feel like this past year, we, we just were able to get the permits. And we, we could follow them so much easier. It was really, it's a great system and it follows right into us. So Sherri's able to immediately, I could say, give me all the permits for last week and she can give them to me. Before it was, it was a lag because it was paperwork and it wasn't computerized. So it's, that's, that's a great system that we have going now.
And the, the building commissioner, Mr. Chairman, has some evidence, although we don't have enough of a, a sampling, both in time and in comparisons. But it would seem he's, he's listed to me three or four communities that have gone to online permitting. The convenience, the convenience of it for someone wishing to pull a permit makes them a little more predisposed to actually pull a permit.
Right.
Instead of not doing so. I think time in a, in a larger sample size will, I will prove that out. But he's, he's convinced it's made a difference already, just in people.
Yeah, that you can go online.
Making permit applications, it might have tried to get by without doing it.
Right. Do I have to go down to the town hall to do my, my shed? Or I'm going to, you know, do this or that? And now I think people are more apt to do it, right?
So that'll, that'll prove itself or disprove itself, I think, in, in maybe another year or so. But, but Pat is convinced of that.
Plus the manpower of, of doing it this way administratively is like, it's so much more helpful than how they used to do it. With a piece of paper and a, and a drawer. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Paula.
Thanks, Paula.
Appreciate it. Fire Chief, Tim Herron. Always a pleasure.
I'll turn it to take up to once your time. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I have a firefighter retiring April of 2022. And I have a firefighter that's going to the academy the end of July. And I have another new hire that's going to the academy the end of November, both for 10 weeks. To fill those shifts would cost $41,000. So I'm asking if I can then bring someone on early, like August 1st, for the, to replace the guy that's going to retire in April for $38,000 instead of $41,000. So that'd pretty much get everyone through the academy that needs to be there. And I wouldn't have to run short on two of those shifts. Reason being is this past weekend, Saturday, we had 14 calls, three of which required me to recall people. Sunday, we had 13 calls, three of which required me to recall people. And today we've had seven as of 2:30 this afternoon. So we're back to being busy again, unfortunately, unfortunately, however you want to look at it. With COVID last year, things kind of quieted right down, but things, things are crazy again. I know I talked to you a few months ago about the SAFER grant to hire more firefighters. Praying that comes in. I've heard nothing yet. They told me like May, June. It's the end of June.
It's got two days.
Still have two days. It'll happen.
Two days, this is government.
We'll see.
Two days, two months. Eight years.
I, I do have someone already kind of in the wings from, you know, we just hired someone not too long ago. And we had that pool of candidates. So I didn't, I didn't budget to fill these academy slots because when I made the budget last year, I was fully staffed. And then through, one guy decided this wasn't for him and left. And one guy had resigned. So I never budgeted for what I'm facing right now, which is happening, what, two days before the new fiscal year begins. So one of these years, I'm going to actually do this right and not start it off trying to scrape pennies. My plan would be, if you approve it, my plan would be, we're going to have to go to a, a town meeting. I believe this in the fall anyways, for, with the contract negotiations that hopefully you'll be signing in about two weeks. Or the next time you meet, knock on wood. I'll have to go to town meeting anyways to fund that. It's not a lot of money. I know, I think, did we just deposit like $77,000 into the AM's account from? So every year we have the Medicare Medicaid CPE program. And if, I think this is the fourth year we've done it. The first year we did like 30,000, then it was like 40, 55. We did 77,000 this year. And pretty much all it is is when Medicare pays out at a much reduced rate than your private insurance companies, at the end of the year, they have a pool of money and ambulance services, doctor's offices, whatever, they can all apply to get additional reimbursement. So Chris White, my administrative assistant, has been very diligent about doing that the past four years. This year they're able to, you know, bring in extra $77,000 if you weren't expecting. That alone would cover everything that I'm looking for, including most likely the, you know, the contract negotiations if, I should say, when they're signed. Normally I wouldn't come ask you for all this, but because it's, I'm actually hiring someone over and above what I currently have staffed. Like I have 23 full time, including myself, and four call. I'm just looking to hire someone eight months earlier than I normally would have. And try to get that person through the academy as well. And then I won't have to fill any of those shifts on overtime, which $20,000 per guy is.
That was my next question. What, what will this do for overtime?
This will prevent me from having to fill all that overtime and run, or, or run short. The problem I have now is if I run short, anytime I have second ambulance call, the station's empty. And I have to recall people.
How much have you received on the SAFER grant for the last few years?
Millions. From 2000, when I, from my first grant in 2010, 10 now, we've a, a lot of money.
What did we get the last two years?
The last two years, so we got a complete set of self-contained breathing apparatus. And I, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't have the numbers off the top. My head, 180, $185,000 or $200,000, somewhere around there. That was to replace 25 SCBA, including spare bottles. This year I applied for the SAFER grant for manpower, assistance of firefighters grant for $200,000 for a new forest rider truck. Year before that, we tried applying for the tower truck, it was denied. We've gotten a lot of specialized equipment over the years through, through AFG.
How much did you request for manpower this year?
I believe it was just under a million, but that's for a three-year period at 100%. So it's like three, yeah, it's about, it's just under a million dollars over a three-year period. And that does include overtime. But with the sixth person, I wouldn't have to fill that shift anyways.
Joe?
I don't have any questions. It sounds like it's a smart plan.
No, yeah, I mean, I think that obviously we need to fill that, that position and it's cost savings to us.
It sounds like it's paying for itself.
Right.
Right. I just.
A few times over.
Guess I would just defer to Jim on what the process would be to.
My mechanical mind is going with the number of authorized positions in the budgetary status. There's one thing that I can't reconcile. We don't present our budget to the, at town meeting in, you know, excruciating detail, almost summary fashion. But a town meeting vote to adopt a departmental budget, generally speaking, I'm not saying specifically here, but generally speaking, that's a, that's both a, a financial action and it is an authorization of, of force of, of a number of positions. And if it's advantageous and affordable, we'll, to the board and the, and the chief, we'll find a way of reconciling that thing. It could be that you actually have the money, but not the authorized position. You could cure that in the fall. But if there's a way of beating that, you're a recipient of SAFER grants already, Chief?
No.
Okay. All right.
This, so this, this wouldn't even be.
I don't know anyone who didn't hit.
Right.
For their third year, okay? There's a queue.
Yeah, we've never applied.
And just about everybody gets it in the third year. But you put your applications in the first too. If you had that kind of authorization, that kind of off-budget authorization, my mind wouldn't be spinning trying to accommodate you like I am right now.
Right.
Anyway, I can, I can sort through that.
Well, I, I do want to send an email to the chair of the FinCom and my FinCom rep, both.
That'd be good.
To let them know too, what, you know, give them some input in it, obviously.
Absolutely.
But I figured I'd start here. At least you say no, then there's no sense in suing.
Definitely, I, we'll take it into consideration once we get the information back from, from Jim and how to do it logistically.
Okay. I, I was looking at it that I was just going to hire and I'd use what, what you budgeted now and then come back at the town meeting and we cross for, you know.
What was it?
Hell.
If you look at Mr. I was talking about piling logs on the, on the, on the fire or, or something like that. I guess I'm from that school too, Chief.
If you look at Mr. Vassell's face, I think you'll get his answer on that.
I can't read him sometimes.
I did.
Oh, did you? Well, let me know later.
He thinks.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Clark, action items.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 15th, 2021, 5 o'clock PM Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Follows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 8th, 2021, 9:05 AM Board of Selectmen and Board of Health joint meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Follows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve but not release the minutes of the June 15th, 2021, 5:05 PM Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Follows in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the two-year extension for Republic Services.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Haynes. Could you give us an update on this process? Not to put you on the spot, but I enjoy this.
Everybody's excited when I show up, yeah. Looking for the crowd with a pitchfork.
We have more people coming in.
They haven't read it yet.
More people coming in if you want to hurry up.
The particulars of the contract haven't changed significantly. I would like to acknowledge the work that David Corwin did, our attorney with the firm of Clifford and Kenny, to recognize some of the, what had happened over time was from 2012, the board had been, had been just continual amendments to the contract. And he actually had the, took the effort to go back and clean up the entire document. So what we have in front of us is a clean document that represents the services that currently provided by Republic Service. As I've spoken to in the past, we've had a very longstanding relationship, which I feel has served the community very well over 20-plus years. And so this would be a two-year extension to that contract, which is permissible under procurement law for the collection and removal of solid waste and recycling. There aren't any specific conditions that come, that immediately change. There will be no changes to the program immediately this year. Things will continue on as is.
No increase to the resident.
No increase to the residents that we foresee this year. Again, I always, you know.
We know.
Take that and say, solid waste, trash is a very expensive business. So it is absolutely a year-to-year commitment that we make. And I would not want to put anyone in the position of trying to look out two to three years to see what our actual expenses will be. But we do anticipate that for FY '22, the residential increase, there'll be no increase to the residential collection program.
Great. Jim? Mr. Chairman, our counsel was, was very complimentary actually of, of Republic's counsel as well. Because when they was merging what had become almost scattershot documents that had piled up over time, his first submittal to Republic had over 200 changes in it. And Republic had backed to him same week with, with responses. So the two attorneys were, you know, were working it. I know it's.
Absolutely.
I know where. I know we're a little impatient, and, you know, we wanted it yesterday, or, you know, five months ago, but I think the outcome was pretty good. I actually read the damn thing.
Yep. You can, well, in that, to that point, you can read the document now.
Yeah.
Whereas before, you'd have to go back to sections that referred to an amendment that was previous to the contract that existed in two thousand twelve, and it was, it's a clean document, it's a good document for us to move forward with when we look at where do we want to be two years from now, three years from now.
So, Mr. Chairman, the pricing is set for, for the coming fiscal year, and then it's indexed, there's an index listed in here for the second year of the extension. These extensions are made, are made possible, as John had suggested before, the statute, you know, specifically exempts trash services such as this from the provisions of Chapter thirty B. And so you're able to engage in direct negotiations with, with companies and the like, so the current agreement expires Thursday?
Correct.
And with an affirmative vote tonight, Mr. Chairman, the trash will be collected come Friday.
How about Monday?
Unabated.
How about Monday?
On Monday's holiday.
Monday's a national...
Monday's a holiday.
Monday's a recognized holiday.
But that was Sunday.
Trash will be delayed on one day.
On Sunday, of course.
That was a trick question, I think.
Okay. Any further discussion, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, to appoint Phyllis Terrell as interim town accountant.
Second.
No escape.
Discussion.
Effective date?
Effective date of July first.
Is it July one?
And I know, Phyllis, you can block your ears on this one if you want, but for those that don't know, Phyllis will be retiring as our town accountant as of June thirtieth. We all wish to thank her for her years of a fantastic job down there. I know the accountant is answerable to just about everyone, and everyone is even more so answerable to Phyllis. So, and you've done a great job, we appreciate it, and good luck in the future, even though we will be seeing you here for the next couple of months as an interim. But thank you for your time and effort. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the committee member resignation of Tyler Cubell as a member, a board member of EB Cam.
Second.
Discussion. What I'd like to do here is request anyone that's interested in the vacancy on that board, I know we have one letter already, but if anyone else is interested, we'll give a two-week period, the people will send in a letter of consideration for the vacancy on EB Cam. Okay?
Yep.
Yep, I'm with me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Rob Ken to serve on the Board of Directors for SSRC.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint John Haynes to serve on the Board of Directors for SSRC.
Second.
Is this your own board, John, just the two of yous getting together?
I'm building my own.
Little fortress up there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve the request from Lenore Christensen of the East Bridgewater Garden Club to put a sign on municipal property from September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one through October second, twenty twenty-one, to advertise garden club plant sale.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the request from Lenore Christensen of the East Bridgewater Garden Club for the use of the town hall parking lot and green for the purpose of a plant and garden sale, fund support high school scholarship and town beautification projects. Set up Friday, October first, twenty twenty-one, day of event Saturday, October second, twenty twenty-one, from nine AM to three PM, rain date Sunday, October third, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the request from Steve Meagan of the Quanis Club of East Bridgewater for the use of the town hall parking lot for Christmas tree sales from November twelfth, twenty twenty-one through December twentieth, twenty twenty-one, Monday through Friday, four thirty PM to eight o'clock PM, and weekends, nine AM to eight o'clock PM.
Second.
Discussion. I met with Steve a couple of weeks ago, and they'll be setting this up in this area out here. They will be using all their vehicles and so will be parked down the other end of the parking lot, not in front of our building, except for weekends. It, and again, it probably works out better for Christmas on the common, it will be right here, and that's usually a huge weekend, and I think, I think it'll be good for everyone.
That's how we always used to do it, it'll be nice to come back to the town hall space.
Many moons ago. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, that is the end of action items.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Town Administrator Report, Mr. Prusell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'll report first on the status of the Town Administrator Search this week. The search consultants will descend upon the town hall on Wednesday, I guess, to begin their one-on-one interviews with members of the Board of Selectmen and their interviews with department heads as well. I understand that'll be perhaps a group meeting at first and may break down a little bit into smaller segments after that, but these are activities in the, in the first and second week of the, of the consultants' timetable, and, which again, is supposed to run about nine to ten weeks before, I think you presented a finalist for, for interviews, Mr. Chairman. What will follow, this is an update of the so-called ideal candidate profile, you know, and once there's a consensus from the, from the board on the content of that profile, the ads will, the ads will go out and the recruitment will, will begin in earnest then. So that's, that's status, and members of the board, you know, I've approached you in, you know, in the last seven to ten days or so to talk about what the interim Town Administrator's Work Program is going to look like between now and, say, Labor Day weekend or, or some other time in September. So far, I think we're, I think we're agreed on a number of items. This is not an all-inclusive list, but how are we going to make the best use of the interim's time while I'm here? One of the things that seems to be an imperative is, is to put a request proposal together for municipal auditing services. We're in the last year of the five-year service contract with, with our current vendor. The year that's about to close, fiscal twenty twenty-one, is the last year under this particular contract, and you may want to test the market to see if you can get comparability or, or better out there. I think it's time.
We've been talking about that for a couple of years now, that we'd be doing something at the end of this contract.
Another imperative, it seems, among the board members, and I wholeheartedly agree, Mr. Chairman, is that we engage the services of a licensed insurance advisor, someone who has a fiduciary responsibility to the client only to, to market our property liability and work as comp and police and fire accident insurance, insurance programs. We're identifying some coverage gaps with our current carrier, you know, price stability is one thing, but, you know, if there are gaps in coverage, then there's no value. And we're, we're beginning to feel a little bit of a pinch there, and I think it's, I think it's time you brought a licensed insurance advisor in. Again, their fiduciary responsibility is to you, not to any brokers, not to any underwriters, but they'll analyze what you got, recommend what they think you need, and you go to market. We'll see what, what that expense is. I've engaged those services on three or four occasions over the, over the years. It's, it's been, you know, very affordable, I think, and sometimes you can't measure the true value, because you never know about a loss that never occurred, you know, that you may or may not have had coverage for. But again, we're feeling the sting of, of something like that right now on a coverage issue, so I think engaging the services or at least, you know, setting up those services is an imperative. Also, you've, oh, Mr. Chairman, you asked me to read this, and it'll probably segue a bit, and we have a, we have a form letter from the, from the Lieutenant Governor congratulating the town on completing two priority projects that you had listed under your Community Compact Program. One was a long-range financial forecasting project, that, that's been done, but another was a, was to develop employee policies and procedures best, best practices. There were nine, and both studies were carried out by the Collin Center for Municipal Management out of UMass Boston. Among the nine major recommendations in the personnel study is that you redo your job descriptions and you undertake a classification and compensation study. You know, the consultants, together with you, would develop a list of comparable towns. You know, I've been doing that recently on a more informal basis, but, you know, eight or ten towns that you share demographics with, geography with, similar-sized tax bills, et cetera, et cetera, and then you just start counting noses out there in all the comp communities and see what the compensation package is in this particular labor market area. We're bleeding a little bit in, in the, in the secondary and tertiary ranks here in setting, in setting wages a little bit, and we no sooner, you know, you know, plug one hole than, than another one or two opens up. You need a more comprehensive, holistic approach to this. I found out that these studies aren't as inexpensive as, as I thought they were, but if there is more money to be had from the Community Compact Program itself, you know, one of the own, you know, one of the products itself recommended, the classification and compensation study, and I don't see why, if, if funds are still available, that we can't get another Community Compact Grant or some other kind of assistance. Otherwise, you might see it on a fall town meeting warrant, but I think it's, I think it's warranted. And the job descriptions also will point out skill sets and gaps in skill sets, not to be negative, but to identify what kind of training programs you're going to institute, you know, for the, for the group. So when those gaps come up, it's not a punitive look, it's a constructive one, okay? Let's make sure we can do, operate that online permitting system or, you know, a certain GIS system or some sort of thing like that. People need to understand that that's the approach, but it's an approach that I think this organization needs, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
So I'll be, I'll be looking at that. The, removing the DPW modular building is something that we're, we're pushing paper on right now, we're not moving buildings yet, but killing trees to get there, right, John? But after that, as the board has reminded me, as soon as we get that DPW modular thing, we have to figure out what to do with the Farren Cottage structure. You made a, you made a start on that before the transition in my office, and it's time to pick that up again, is what I've been told. Contract renewals for the assessor and the building commissioner, the building commissioners is pretty, is pretty close, we've agreed on terms, and there is a, not a manifesto, but a letter of intent that has to be proposed about where we're taking inspection services and community development processes upstairs in the building commissioner's role in that, but all of the contract terms have been agreed to, and it's in the hands of council. We'll have to onboard the new town accountants, where, like Ivory Soap, we're ninety-nine and forty-four, one-hundred percent there with our top accounting candidate, who, if we finish this off at midday tomorrow, I could bring the, the contract documents and nomination to the, to the board at its next meeting, and the party would start the second day after the Labor Day weekend. Mr. Chairman, it's, it's kind of exciting, so onboarding the new accountant is, I make it look like it's one of my tasks, but through the good graces of that lady in the audience, she'll be working past her June thirty retirement date doing just that for us. So her own work will be her own legacy, but staying on for a period of, you know, what could be eight or ten weeks or so, Phyllis, is really commendable, so thanks. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prusell.
Oh. The new stimulus money, you need to say something about that, Rebecca.
We have received a payment for the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA, ARPA. We received seven hundred and sixty thousand, which is pretty much exactly half of what the town will get, which is about one point four million, I believe. I am going kind of through the rules and how you go about, you know, submitting what projects or, you know, what it's useful, what it's not used for, so we might have to get together with the department heads and kind of figure out what to do with those funds.
The, I mean, the department heads?
Can you use it for an HR study?
Who knows? We'll find out.
Yeah, they mentioned that, but...
I think we have...
Cyber security for your water system.
I think we have three department heads who have already spent five hundred thousand on it.
Yeah.
The initial packet's a hundred and fifty-one pages, so it's kind of, I know, I wish they would kind of consolidate it into, you know, ABC.
Has it been decided, do we have to go through the state on each one of these now? Are we going through limitations?
Phyllis County has a meeting on Wednesday, they're going to discuss the CARES Act. Hopefully, they'll send us some money that we do.
How many checks are we still waiting for?
We're waiting, I want to say at least eight checks, and it's from, submittals from December.
I feel like they're very behind.
The beginning, like December third.
Yeah.
So they're, they're pretty behind, but they are going to discuss the ARPA as well, but we've already, I mean, maybe they give the towns half and then the county gets half, I'm not sure, because we've already gotten our half of it.
Right.
So...
There seemed to be some, a lot of talk up at the State House on how this money was going to be appropriated, what we are going to have to do different from the CARES Act.
It's a lot.
Last I knew, they were still talking about how that was going to go.
Yeah, I'm hoping, yeah, they'll come up with some different guidance, because it's confusing right now.
Okay. You know, I almost heard snores in the back of the room there, Mr. Chairman, until mention of the new money came...
Their heads were fried up, didn't they?
Yeah, everybody freaked out.
That back row.
I've thought about this for months, I'm just, I'm just sitting here.
The funds actually came in really quick. I submitted the application two days later.
Yeah.
I got a call from Phyllis saying, we just got this one.
Like filing for unemployment.
The fire chief now wants four new firefighters.
Yeah.
We're getting three new canines and, you know, two street cleaners. We're all set, I guess.
I'll wait for the SAFIC grant.
I mean?
I'll wait for the SAFIC grant.
Three years.
Thank you.
I'll get it issued.
What discussions?
I don't have anything.
Dana?
I could just update you, we, myself and John Haynes and Rob Ken met with, had a Zoom call with EP two weeks ago, week and a half ago, regarding the roads, which has been an ongoing issue for many years, the, which I'm sure every, every meeting knows about, so...
Unaccepted roads?
Unaccepted roads, yes, so we've, we can kind of update you that they are now, understand exactly what it is that we're looking for them to do. They will get, gather the information, get together with town council, because there will be some attorney work that needs to be done there as well, and give us a report, itemized report, which I believe we'll end up going to the planning board with, because it has to go through that department first and foremost. But I hope to see something probably within the next... and give us a report, itemized report, which I believe we'll end up going to the Planning Board with, because it has to go through that department first and foremost. But I hope to see something probably within the next couple of weeks. So hopefully, by our meeting on the 9th, August 9th, we should have at least an idea of the direction that we can go.
We are actually meeting, the next scheduled meeting is July 12th.
That's what I was just going to ask.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's not.
I was thinking, wow, that's cool.
Jumping way ahead. All right, July 12th.
July 12th, hopefully.
So hopefully, we'll have, we'll have some more information, because I know that's a pressing issue for many residents, which we've heard from quite a bit over the course of the last.
And rightfully so.
Twelve years.
Be nice to get something on a fall town meeting warrant, at least.
I know Planning has a couple of streets that they want accepted for the fall town meeting, but they want to know if we're having a fall town meeting, what the date is. They want all that information before they pass it on to Town Council.
We can't tell them a date, but I can't, you know, 100% we will have a fall town meeting.
Yeah, I said more than likely we'll have one.
Yeah.
And we're not giving them a date, we see what's in order.
Not yet. Got something big coming, though. We've got something big. Tell you later.
You can't.
That's right.
I was just trying to improve ratings.
Yeah, right, right, right.
People come back.
Come back, yeah, come back in July. You really want to be at the next.
Just giving golf lessons.
No, they don't want that.
Just a quick thing that's been brought up a couple of times in the last two or three weeks. It's, we have constables in town, both elected and appointed constables from other towns that wanted to constable work in, in East Bridgewater. We've been going over this probably since the last time that they were elected, I think it was 2018. And we're still waiting for answers from the state on what restrictions they are going to put on these operations, whether or not we are going to continue with the elections. Will we go strictly to an appointed constable? How many appointed, does, does East Bridgewater actually need? What will be qualifications, certifications, so on and so forth, for both those that are coming in from outside the town and for those that will be appointed inside the town? So those are the things, for those that are asking, we're still working on it. We're just waiting for answers from the state to give us some direction on what we're going to do. Okay? Anything else?
No, sir.
Have a great Fourth.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Happy Fourth of July, everybody.
Happy Fourth, be safe.